We're going to call this meeting to order at this time. Reverend Linda Bravman, pastor of St. James United Methodist Church, if you will come up at this time for us, lead us in the invocation, could you also lead us in the place?
Yes, I will. Sovereign God, as we gather together tonight to do the business of the city of Palatka, we ask, Lord, for your wisdom and your guidance and clarity in the discussions that take place tonight. We thank you for the honor to represent this great city and for those who come tonight, Lord, we thank you for their sacrifice of time. So be with us as we go through this meeting, Lord. Keep us safe, keep us honest, and keep us true. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Hill.
Here.
Vice Mayor Brown. Vice Mayor Brown. Oh, sorry. Commissioner Warhol.
Present.
Commissioner Campbell.
Present.
Commissioner McCaskill.
Here.
All members are present and accounted for, and do not.
Thank you. Has everyone had an opportunity for good minutes?
Second.
The motion on forward. Second, are there any further discussion? Question, call, all in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Moving on to public recognition and presentations, I want to take one out of order because I want to make sure that they don't get a call to an emergency prior to anything taking place or lose their kickball game. So Chief, if you can join me up front at this time. That's because Chiefs all got hurt.
I'm Mayor, Commissioner, City Manager.
What about me?
Mr. Holmes. Every year, since I've been the chief, I thought it was really important for us to recognize our employees every year that do an outstanding job. So every year I send out a ballot around Christmas time for all of our employees to vote on who they feel has led a department the best and who went above and beyond their normal day of work. The first one we have today is Engineer Robert Moore. He got a Fire Officer of the Year. There was thinking about nine or 10 people on the ballot for that. He leads our programs for going to get in the backpacks for the kids for school. He led our programs for this past toy drive we just did for the giving away to the community. He leads all that stuff. He's also doing a fantastic job doing instruction and teaching through the fire department. He's been with us since 2011, so these are the kind of guys that we want to try to maintain and retain. More than raised in Palatka, so we're just so very fortunate to have him, so I'd like to congratulate him.
And he may be the best athlete in the fire department.
He could be. You don't want to fight him as a world-class boxing champion. My firefighter of the year couldn't make it tonight. He's actually got it back-to-back, which shows consistency that he just gives his all every single day, but he couldn't make it tonight, and that was firefighter Matt Pope, and he's been with us for five years as well. The final one we got, we put up for the Rookie of the Year, the guy that shows the most drive initiative throughout his first year that he works at the fire department. This guy we hired about 90 days ago, and he's made that big of an impression on the folks that he works with. I learned a lot about him. We actually changed the way we do our hiring practices. They went through a two-week school, and at the end of it, they had to do a presentation. I would have never known about the guy until he gave his presentation, but he made it to Tuesday of Hell Week in the Navy SEAL program. So, I mean, he spent his life protecting our country. He does not walk anywhere he goes, so if you say, hey, go get this, he's going into full sprint, so it's actually kind of funny to watch. He also gets the award for the farthest travel to work, because he came to us from Chicago, Illinois. But Joel Westerhoff joined us 90 days ago. We look forward to a long career with him, so these are the. Yeah, these guys got kind of an interesting first day on the job. They were there for sign-offs, and, I mean, 8:30 we had our first fire on Mimosa Drive, and they didn't finish that before we were out at GP for about two and a half hours. So these guys thought they were in the right spot when they want to be firemen, so. They've been in confined space training all day today, so they're probably tired, and they got the kickball game to get one tonight, so we'll let them go. Thank you, guys. One of them's seven, and one of them's at eight o'clock.
Are y'all still recruiting?
Yes, and anybody that. Hey, can we get a picture of you guys with the newspaper, please? The city manager will join us, if you don't mind. We got to sell papers, we got to have them in the front page. Come on, Mayor, get the pictures.
We got four positions open, so we made as any firefighters, we are hiring.
Next up, we're going to take this in out of order as well. Service recognition, I'm going to have. For our service recognition, Melvin Register. So let's give Melvin a round of applause. So, for those who don't know Melvin Register, as Melvin is coming forward, and you can actually sit right there, Melvin, if you want to.
Oh, you're good.
You can sit right there if you want.
All right.
Melvin has, Melvin ran out water plant for a number of years, just recently retired from the city of Palatka, but he's served graciously on our general pension, on our general employee's pension board from January 2009 until December 2019. Melvin's service to this community, his immense knowledge of water, of his trade, deems him to be one of the biggest experts in this community when it comes to H2O. And if you've ever seen that Nissan truck with H2O on the side of it, then you realize that he is truly a water expert. Anything that you want to know about water, you'll know. My first contact with Melvin, we learned about fluoride, and I learned more about those 8,000 pages of fluoride than I wanted to learn in my life. Melvin would have a way of talking about water and water quality and all this, this, other stuff that makes you feel like you needed to go back to kindergarten, because his knowledge was just that, just that keen and superior to everyone else that related to his expertise. So, Melvin, we just thank you for the time that you've given the city of Palatka, your commitment throughout the course of being an employee and a citizen to this community, because he's also that person who will come up as a citizen and hand you his concerns. And so it's not too often that we see, you know, our department heads or any employees who also come in and are engaged in processes, and they make sure that their voice is heard. So we thank you for that and the man that you are. And what we have today presented to you, presented to Melvin L. Register Jr., Chairman, Palatka General Employees Pension Board, January 1st, 2009 through December 20th, 2019, with gratitude for your many years of outstanding service to the City Commission, employees and citizens of Palatka, Florida, presented on this ninth day of January 2020, Palatka City Commission and staff. Let's give him a round of applause. And we also want to thank your wife and your family for lending, for lending you to us for a couple decades. And so again, Melvin, thank you for all that you do. And Melvin's also Santa Claus for all the Christmas party, and so he's done that graciously. Any comments from the commission?
I saw Melvin outside, and I told him, he got all that beard, I hadn't seen him before. But he's always been for the city of Palatka, and we had to be represented out of town, and somebody wanted to know about water or our water plant. They said, they said, send him. He'd go and not only go and represent us, but come back and give us a report that we could understand. Sometimes they give us reports, and we don't know what they're talking about, but he is always happy to take you across, to take you through that water plant and show you what a great water plant we have. And anything you ask him to do, he never turns up. He never turned me down, I'll tell you.
That's all right.
And I want to thank him personally for his service, because I think he was a great asset to the city of Palatka.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Again, I've been here for six years now, completed six years at least, and since that time, it's been a joy and a pleasure to work with you, Melvin. And again, we'd like to thank you for your deep and thorough knowledge of H2O and all that you put into it, poured into it, and the passion that you had around your job. And we want to thank your family for allowing you to serve, serve the city of Palatka. So with that being said, my hat's off to you and my hair, hair too. I wish you the best.
Former Commissioner Lever Kitchen.
No, I just want to say thank you for the nine years that I was on the commission. You always had the information, committed I needed it, you had it, complete information, maybe a whole lot more than I needed to know, but thank you for all you did, and thank you for doing such a wonderful job of the City of Palatka Water Plant. We miss you greatly and always will. Love you, Melvin.
Thank you. Anybody else have any comments? So again, Melvin, on behalf of City of Palatka, we love you, and we miss you being around here, and we want you to enjoy your retirement. So again, thank you for your service.
Thank you, you're welcome.
God bless you.
Bless you. Have a good Thanksgiving.
You do the same, thanks, sir.
Next up, going back to the agenda, proclamation, our item A. As the members of the African American Cultural Arts Council come forward this time. Proclamation reads as follows. Whereas Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. devoted his life to advancing equality, social justice, and opportunity for all, and challenged all Americans to participate in the never-ending work of building a more perfect union through his teachings, which continue to guide and inspire us. And whereas Dr. King advanced the cause of civil rights throughout the South in spite of dangers associated with his work, locally while taking part in the St. Augustine Civil Rights Movement, Dr. King was arrested on June 11th, 1964, on the steps of the Monson Motel Restaurant. His famous letter from St. Augustine Jail to his friend Rabbi Israel Dresner urging him to recruit rabbis to come to St. Augustine resulted in the largest mass arrest of rabbis in American history on June 18th, 1964, at the Monson Hotel. And whereas on the eve of his death, Dr. King said, "We have an opportunity to make America a better nation. I may not get there with you, but I want you to know tonight that we, as a people, will get to the promised land. Though we have made strides since the turbulent era of Dr. King's movement, his work and our journey remains unfinished. And whereas recognized that our nation has yet to reach Dr. King's promise, to the promised land that Dr. King had, it is not an admission of defeat, but a call of action during these challenging times as our capacity to support each other remains limitless to make our communities better with increased opportunity for all citizens by carrying on Dr. King's work, by breaking the cycle of poverty and reinvesting in our schools, because education unlocks the child's potential and remains our strongest weapon against injustice and inequality. And whereas Dr. King's message transcends national borders, devoted his life to serving others. So as we observe Dr. Martin Luther King holiday and the day of service on Monday, January 20th, let us ask ourselves what Dr. King believed in to be life's most urgent and persistent question. What are you doing for others? By lifting up our brothers and sisters through dedication and service, we honor Dr. King's memory and reaffirm our common humanity. Now therefore, I, Terrell Hill, Mayor of the City of Palatka, Florida, together with members of the Palatka City Commission, proclaim January 20th, 2020, as Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. federal holiday day of service in Palatka, and we call upon all our citizens to pay tribute to the life and works of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. through participation in community service, projects, events on Martin Luther King Day, and throughout the year. And witness where I appear to set my hand and cause to be affixed to seal the city of Palatka, Florida on this ninth day of January in the year, by Lord, 2020. Terrell Hill, Mayor, Commissioners Mayor Lawson Brown, Rufus Fordham, Justin Campbell, Tammy McCaskill Valentine, Commissioners.
So move.
Second. The motion on forward. Second, all in favor, say aye. Motion carries unanimously. Let's give him a round of applause. Governor President, you have the words for us.
Thank you. To say the recognition, African American Cultural Arts Council does strive each and every day to represent this community, and we encourage all of our citizens to join us in our festival that will be held on Monday, January 20th, at Riverfront Park. We encourage all of us to just come in, celebrate, and honor the legacy that Dr. King has left on all of us.
So again, we thank the African American Cultural Arts Council for the work that it does in this community, the insightful work, which emphasizes heritage and also inclusion, as we continue to realize that we're all better together. And that's a common theme you're going to hear around here, and we've seen the MLK Day festival begin to grow, and more people are starting to take part in it. This year, we'll continue to be at the riverfront again, so that we can take full advantage of the beauty of this community and the beauty of the people who make up the rainbow in this community. So again, we want to thank you guys for the work that you do. Moving forward, proclamation for human trafficking awareness. Got Michelle Garner and Lakeisha Mack from CDS Family Behavior Health Services Incorporated forward at this time. Let me do the proclamation first. Whereas nearly a century and a half ago, President Abraham Lincoln issued the Emancipation Proclamation, a document that reaffirmed the noble goals of equality and freedom for all that lie at the heart of what it means to live in America. In years since, we have tirelessly pursued the realization and protection of these essential principles. Sports Center. Whereas despite our successful thousands of individuals, despite our success, thousands of individuals living in the United States, is still more abroad suffering silence under the intolerant, intolerable yoke of modern slavery. During National Slavery and Human Trafficking Prevention Month, we stand with all those who are held and compelled service. We recognize the people, organizations, and governmental entities that are working to combat human trafficking, and we recommit to bringing an end to this inexcusable human rights abuse. And whereas human trafficking is a $32 billion a year global criminal enterprise and is a crime as well, and as a civil and human rights violation, an estimated 25 million people are currently victims of human trafficking for both sex and labor. And whereas human trafficking endangers lives of millions of people around the world, and it is a crime that knows no border, human trafficking is a form of modern-day slavery, be it for commercializing, sexual, or labor exploitation. This otherwise multi-layered crime does not have a static profile. It affects children, adults, U.S. citizens, residents, and foreign nationals alike. And whereas this month, we do not simply reflect on the appalling reality, we also pledge to do all in our power to end the horrific practice of human trafficking that plagues victims around the world and in our neighborhoods. And whereas Human Trafficking Awareness Day is observed from January 11th in municipalities across the country in order to educate the public and raise awareness about human trafficking. And the city of Palatka has a strong commitment to social justice. Now therefore, I, Terrell Hill, Mayor of the City of Palatka, Florida, together with members of the Palatka City Commission, do hereby endorse the month of January 2020 as National Slavery and Human Trafficking Prevention Month. And the city of Palatka, we urge all citizens to educate themselves about all forms of modern slavery and signs and consequences of human trafficking. And witness where I appear to set my hand and cause to be affixed to seal the city of Palatka, Florida on this ninth day of January in the year, by Lord, 2020. Terrell Hill, Mayor, Mayor Lawson Brown, Justin Campbell, Rufus Fordham, Tammy McCaskill Valentine, Commissioners, I'll entertain a motion. So motion on forward, the second, all in favor, say aye. Motion carries unanimously. Let's give him a round of applause.
All right, as the mayor has stated, human trafficking is a form of modern-day slavery by which traffickers profit from the control and exploitation of others. Under U.S. law, human trafficking is defined as the transporting, soliciting, recruiting, harboring, providing, or obtaining of another person for transport for the purposes of forced labor, domestic servitude, or sexual exploitation using force, fraud, and/or coercion. The International Labor Organization estimates that there are 40.3 million victims of human trafficking globally. Eighty-one percent of them are trapped in forced labor, 25% of them are children, but 75% are women and girls. It is estimated by Florida Health that human trafficking in the U.S. is somewhere between 14,500 and 17,500 people annually. According to the Human Trafficking Hotline, Florida ranks third in the U.S. in human trafficking cases reported by states, behind only California and Texas. Jacksonville ranked 48 out of the top 100 most populous cities from 2007 to 2016, according to the most recent reports from the National Human Trafficking Center. There were 2,133 reports of human trafficking cases reported to the Florida Abuse Hotline between the years of 2017 and 2018. 316 of those cases were in the Northeast, and 521 of those cases were in Central Florida. Recently, in 2019, Hillsborough County Sheriff's Office ran an operation called Operation Trade Secrets and made at least 104 arrests of individuals involved in sexual trafficking. That was just last year. Safe Place is a national youth outreach and prevention program for young people under the age of 18 in need of immediate help and safety. As a collaborative community preventive initiative, Safe Place designates businesses and organizations as Safe Place locations making help readily available to youth in communities across the country. Safe Place locations includes libraries, YMCAs, fire stations, public buses, various businesses, and social service facilities. CDS interface youth shelters are part of a national network of shelters to help you. Here in Putnam County, CDS has made many schools and ride solutions a safe place. We are deeply grateful for your support of our efforts to keep these youth safe. Thank you.
Public comments will be limited to three minutes. No action will be taken on topics of discussion. Anyone here to speak during public comment, please fill out one of the yellow speaker's cards in the back of the room, bring it forward. As you approach, please give your name and address, so that we will have that for the I've got one speaker who's here for the park bench donation program, Kathleen Postconnect. And so I told Kathleen I was going to put her name, so she gave me, she gave me a quick list.
You want to switch that one out? You can switch it out, because you can just do one. We'll do two then, because she got another. My name's Kathleen Postconnect. You need to give me, you need me to give you the address. 113 Shell Trail Satsuma, Florida. I represent One Putnam, and One Putnam is a nonprofit that operates in the city and county, and our mission is to work on the revitalization of Palatka and Putnam County. One of the items that we are asking for consideration is the approval of the park bench donation program. Jonathan Rufus has forwarded me a draft of a proposal that is already created. It will need commission approval. We have several people that would like to donate park benches to the program, but they can't donate yet until the program is approved. So I'm asking for consideration and approval of the park bench donation program. That concludes that request. Can we go to the second one? Okay. We also have, as One Putnam, a second request for consideration, and this is one that's a little more complicated. It is looking at the Palatka ordinances for liquor laws, and I'm going to read a little bit, so you can just be clear about it. In working on our downtown revitalization focus area, it's come to our attention that the current alcohol ordinances are prohibitive to future downtown growth because of location restrictions that are beyond state statutes. I've researched the ordinances and detailed them in an attachment that I'll turn in. Pensacola, Florida, which is our model for downtown revitalization, had a similar issue, and when they started their revitalization effort, they amended their ordinances to exempt the dense business district. So we are recommending that on our Section 10-3 location restrictions, that we don't change anything, but we just add a item D on there that says the dense business area are exempt from this restriction, and then, and that will allow for future growth of whatever the dense business district is defined as. Right now, we're proposing that the dense business area be defined as the downtown riverfront district and the downtown business district, exempting any parks that are in those areas. The issue that we have with Section 10-3 is that they are, a licensed premise shall not locate within 300 feet of an established religious institution or school, however that, that a licensed premises may be granted a conditional use. So we've got 300 feet there for religious institutions or schools, and then the other is a licensed premise shall not locate within 300 feet of any established licensed premises provided, so that if you want to open a restaurant with liquor license, you can't locate within 300 feet of a religious institution, school, or another licensed premises. And so this would prohibit restaurants and bars being co-located in the downtown business district. State statute, it's beyond state statute, and they are, their definition is 500 feet, and we're using what Pensacola did for our recommendation, and that's how they, they allowed it in their downtown business district, is to exempt just that small area from them. So I will turn in my research, and I can email, or I've emailed you.
Right, well, I did have a chance to meet with One Putnam and Miss Postconnect, and again, I also looked at our zoning as well, and again, it is very, very restrictive when we look at it in that term, that we're talking about inviting other businesses to our district, which goes from the riverfront all the way to 11th Street. And with those exemptions, I think it'll probably be worth looking at, and if I can just give direction to. and if I can just give, uh, direction to, uh, the city manager to look at it with the, uh, I guess with the commission approval, if it's okay, to have him at least look into it to see what we can do to accommodate, uh, and to assist in that measure.
Any comments from the commission?
All right, good luck.
Seems like my consensus, anyone? Seems like my consensus. There is a direction to look into it. Also, I'd just add that there is an additional opportunity, um, to circumvent that process, and that's the veres process. I think what you're requesting is that we add the exemption to alleviate the need to go through variances.
Correct.
Just wanna make sure we have that correct. Thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate.
Is there anyone else here for public comment? Seeing no one, we'll close public comment. Moving forward to our consent agenda, we have four items on the consent agenda. I'm gonna ask that item C be pulled, are there any other items on the consent agenda that you wish to have pulled at this time?
I don't have a motion that we accept the items excluded from C.
Settle.
There's a motion on the floor in a second, my Vice Mayor Brown. Any further discussion?
Questions?
Questions called, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item three C, Special Events Permit Number two zero dash zero one, uh, one twenty twenty, is the date for eight AM to four PM for Martin Peking Day Parade and Festival to grant permission to exceed all level noise levels authorized street closure with Benjamins, the applicant agent, for after the cultural arts. Uh, I, I just wanted to make one notation, and it's, and I take the responsibility. If you recall, the last two years, the city has, uh, applied for this as a co-applicant. I didn't get an opportunity to sign the application this year, so I would ask that the city, as we approve this item or make action to this item, that we also, um, include the city as co-applicant in this, correcting that, and move forward from there, where the city's, the city's contribution to this event is noted through our continued service and with the fees, and the fees are nominal in this event.
Settle.
Settle.
There's a motion on the floor in a second, is there any further discussion?
Questions?
Questions called, all in favor, say aye. Opposed motion carries unanimously. Send out one extension, my Commissioner Campbell, who will fill out the appropriate forms. And then council approval of extension. And so, we will move forward at this time. Moving on, thank you again. And again, we wanna make sure that we also thank Representative Bickers, who has served this country tirelessly and also serves this community, um, for the work that he's done. Man Sergeant Mayor. And we just wanna thank him again for agreeing to serve for another three years on the Gascatory Board. Moving forward, item four of the agenda is our ordinance amending the firefighter retirement plan to amend the line of duty, death, duty, disability provisions, the codify provisions of Florida statutes, Section one twelve point one eight, point one eight one, and one seventy-five point three two one, to adopt uniform rules related to firefighters' cancer presumption laws, section reading for adoption.
An ordinance of the city of Palaca, Florida revising Chapter two, Article three, Division six of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Palaca, Florida entitled Firefighter Retirement Plan by amending Section two dash two four four Disability Retirement, General Conditions, Special Conditions Applicable to Duty Disability, and Section two dash two four eight, Member Survival Benefits, Special Conditions Applicable to Death and Line of Duty, repealing all ordinances and conflicts, providing authority to codify and providing an effective date.
So move.
There's a motion on the floor in a second. We're now up on the floor for public hearing, is there anyone here for public hearing? Seeing no one, we'll close public hearing. Is there any further discussion from the commission?
Questions?
Questions called, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed motion carries unanimously. Moving on, city manager administrative reports. Shanahan.
Yes, sir.
Been busy.
Just a little, this, uh. How's everyone doing this evening?
Yes.
Bill Shanahan, uh, city manager. Uh, first thing is, in reference to my hundred days, I've got, the next two things we'll be doing is, number one is, we'll be setting up a meeting with, um, most of the, or all of the committees or organizations that are working towards revitalization or redevelopment in the city. Have to bring everybody together and make sure that we're all going in the same direction. The good news is, everyone I've talked to are saying the same thing, so we are going in the same direction. It's just getting everyone together. And the other thing is, I've asked our clerk to set me up a meeting with our, our media representatives that deal with the city, because I, I think it's a good idea that we all work together, make sure that we're all on the same team. So that's what we're doing in reference to the hundred days. We are still working on updating, creating a new personnel policy. It seems the more we look at it, the more stuff we have to put into it. And, uh, we're looking at salaries, we're looking at discipline, we're looking at appeal policies, we're looking at evaluations, and we're looking at reorganizing, reorganizing and changing some of the, uh, current position descriptions so that the folks are doing enough work that they can do a great job rather than having people doing so much you can't do anything for them. Uh, so we're, we're looking at that hard. Uh, in reference to planning, I've asked for a list of issues that we need to address so we can bring that to the commission and start looking at ways. We wanna make sure that the zoning and what we're doing is in place before the development gets there. It makes it a lot easier, a lot more efficient, and better for the city. Also, working with our police departments in reference to code enforcement, we're looking at a, how it would work to have a magistrate judge perform those duties. In addition to that, we're looking at our code enforcement ordinance, because it hasn't been updated in well over a decade, and we're looking at fees. And the, uh, just one other thing, I wanna look at surplus properties. We have a lot of surplus properties that we're not getting any tax money for. I would like to look at either, once the commission identifies it as surplus, either sell it, or if it can't be sold because it can't be used that way and it's adjacent to properties, maybe give it to the folks so we can get that back, and the tax was what it needs to be. That's all I have to say this evening.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And, and there has been some identification surplus property for affordable housing and also, um, in other instances somewhere, so that it does exist. Ms. Robinson, any job postings?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Jennifer Robinson, Human Resources. We actually have quite a few job postings right now. Um, for the city manager's office, we have the administrative assistance to the city manager. At the wastewater treatment plant, we have a operator trainee and a mechanic trainee. We also have a part-time administrative assistant at the airport. And we also have four firefighters that we're looking for. So yes, we have lots of opportunities at the city. So the jobs are posted on our city website, also posted on Indeed and Employee Florida. You can also email me at HR, no email, HR@palaca-fl.gov, your resumes or the applications, I will be taking those. Second thing I have is February the eighth. Last year, um, for the first time, we had a lupus awareness ride here in the city of Palaca, a motorcycle, uh, event, um, that catered to donating to lupus and the calls for lupus. We'll be doing that again on February the eighth. We started at the airport and at the River Center, um, just in front of the riverfront. This year, Commissioner Campbell will be riding with us.
Why is everyone laughing when you said that?
So we had a really great event last year. We had a lot of support from our commission last year, so we look forward to you guys coming out again this year, um, to support that effort and welcome all of our newcomers into the city of Palaca. So we will get the information out there, and we're just looking forward to a really good day.
About how many riders you had last year, wasn't it pretty big?
It was about sixty-five. This year, we're looking at a little over a hundred.
So you had at least sixty-six, because the back of the rider has a bike.
And that's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Griffin?
Yes, sir.
As you come for us, good to see Mr. Gullen.
You can get that one behind you, so. Jonathan Griffith, Public Works Director. Uh, just a couple of quick notes, Mr. Shanahan was so kind to get up, uh, early in the morning with me, two days in a row. Uh, we rode two of the garbage routes. The third day I couldn't go, I was on daddy duty, uh, so he rode with Mr. Chandler, got to see all three of the garbage routes. Uh, we do have two bids out, uh, one is a million year resurfacing bid, it closes next Monday, so looking forward to bringing that back to you at the next meeting, hopefully, if not, first meeting in February. And we also have a, um, South Historic District Stormwater Phase Two bid out, so another large construction project we hope to get started in the next six months. Any questions about any other ongoing projects?
First one would be? Yeah, just, just so you all know, when you start picking up the garbage, it is dark and it is cold. That's why gentlemen, gentlemen, work hard.
I gotta thank, well, one question. I have one question on the garbage stuff.
Yes, sir.
The, um, I thought we were supposed to be giving feedback on that.
Yes, sir, um.
Weekly or whatever, we haven't gotten anything that I know of.
I, I, I know we were asked to evaluate the process based on the last meeting. Uh, that was part of me going out and, and learning, uh, what they were doing and what the issues were out there.
Right.
Uh, it was very pleasant to see that, that there was a lot of good stuff going on out there, and there were a couple of things where probably we have to give a couple of garbage cans to make sure it's right. In addition to that, because our garbage collectors had some free time because of going down to one week, they were able to go out and pick up trash and clean up areas that had never been picked up and cleaned up before. And, and so there were benefits like that, and, and so we would like to take, uh, have two more me, or at least two meetings with our citizens and, and make sure we haven't missed anything, and then put all that information to a full pay, a full-size report and bring it to you.
I understand, but I'm hearing internal reports. I'd rather hear from the residents, because those are the people who we are serving, and they showed up, they're saying that, hey, I'm having these issues. So I don't get a good woman fuzzy until I hear from them. I mean, it's good, and I, I'm not saying that nobody's not doing a, a good job or a great job. I'd rather hear from them so that they can ease my concerns.
I did wanna make one other note, following the meeting, um, where we discussed this last, we did refund all the, uh, fees that were charged for the second cans, even the, you know, the people that paid and lumped some and those that had a payment plan in place. So that was taken care of, as you directed.
And you had some additional requests too, right?
I believe so.
And what about educating them on the recycling process? Educating citizens on the recycling process, remember we're supposed to provide and implication on that. So where are we at? Where are we in that process?
So, uh, we've attempted to connect a couple of times, and our schedules have not permitted, but we do plan to talk to Keep Putnam Beautiful. Mr. Shanahan, and I had discussed bringing back a proposed kind of outreach or marketing, uh, plan for your review and input at the next meeting. Uh, we really want you to kind of, um, give us your thoughts and sign off on how you want us to have that outreach. And we need, we need input from the commission on how to proceed with that.
I think, I think my concern is, because I was about to make the motion, I think one of the things that Commissioner Moore was trying to allude to was, again, something that we requested or something that we're supposed to, the services that we're supposed to be giving to the citizens, we are not giving to them. And I think, again, I get tagged in so many posts, I get so many pictures, I, you know, even myself riding around. And I think that, again, we are not doing what it is that we said that we are going to do. And that's a problem, because again, at the meeting, our next meeting, I think we extended it for thirty days. That time is coming to an end, and still we have nothing that's different from the first time before. And so we're gonna have these same citizens that come out and say the same thing, and we're gonna have to do the same thing or do something different, simply because nothing has been different, done differently to educate or advise our citizens of anything. And that's my major concern.
I think what I saw, and again, I missed half that meeting, uh, at the last meeting, because we had something else we had to go through, but I, the main thing that I saw was that it wasn't actually big issues with the garbage. Uh, there were two garbage areas out of all of them that we saw that was a mess, and, and, and the reason they were a mess was nobody used bags. And, um, but the issue that I was seeing that, that, that our, our guys, I think, are dealing with, but, and hopefully we'll be able to deal better if we keep it going this way, is the fact that we have areas where people are just throwing things down and, and bringing out equipment or furniture and just throwing it out, and that, those are separate issues.
I would disagree, because I've given specific areas that should have been addressed, like the up and down the Washington Street corridor. Like I've given specific, I've given specific areas, um, and that's still the same. So even with, just what we say, where we're gonna come up with a plan, we asked for a plan as to what it was that we were going to put out to inform our citizens. Because again, I can show you Google's messages, I can show you Google's posts where I've been tagged in, and again, citizens are mad. Citizens are still furious because of when, especially the ones who sat in here that night, because nothing has been done different. On the inside, there may be some things that have done different. We asked for reports, we haven't got reports, the citizens asked for stuff, they haven't gotten it, so we only can assume that, guess what, it's nothing happening.
We just don't see the side where the citizens are saying, hey, things are going the way they were planned, and also, here's the education piece, and all with the recycling and everything else. So we would like to hear from the citizens, and we thought we were gonna get that, haven't gotten it.
And what, what's happening too is the folks are still buzzing, they, they don't wanna stop picking up twice. I know everybody doesn't need it, you just got a small house, but if you pass by my house, my hands are usually full. Now, I, I suppose, I suppose to live alone. I live alone sometimes because my folks drift in and out. So there is time I might not have much, but most of the time, there is quite a bit. And people feel like they take our service, and they aren't, they aren't getting it when they go to one, once. I mean, the, the stuff about furniture and stuff being put out, we have, uh, we have given them free pickup for, for that kind of stuff, and asked them to call in to get it picked up, right?
Not year-round.
We don't.
We have amnesty days.
Okay, well, usually, they call somebody and get some help by getting stuff picked up, and they're, they're probably as small as ours to it.
It's a million dollars a yard.
Okay. It get, it, it can get picked up.
So what are the next steps, like, can we?
Better, better, yeah, before we do that, how about, how about, how about the commission? Give, get with Mr., get with Mr. Griffin and Mr. Shanahan, and give them exactly what you want to see next, as opposed to them taking certain steps that may not be necessarily what you want. Can we at least get with them at least after this meeting or whenever, or a quarter of the time, so that you can get them exactly what you want, so they can bring it back to you, and then there's no confusion as to what it is that you absolutely wanna see. If it's a survey, if it's a training, if it's a meeting, whatever it is, more than just saying that, you know, because Mr. Borum says he wants to hear from the people, uh, you got certain things that you wanna hear, but let's make sure we just say, if you want, if you want, if you want a workshop or a survey where, where the, where the citizens are coming in, if it's a robo-call where they can say, yes, we like it, no, we don't, then if that's what it is, then let's make that happen over the course of next few weeks. But if it's a, if it's a meeting in the section, as they already said, they're, they're scheduling, that happen, but whatever it is exactly, if there's something else that's not there that you want, just make sure that they have it so that, so that there is no ambiguity. But whatever it is exactly, if there's something else that's not there that you want, just make sure that they have it so that, so that there is no ambiguity. And that if you're saying, I want to see A, then let's let A be a directive. And that, and I think that's probably the simplest way because it seems to me there are a lot of questions from the commission as it relates to this issue. And we just want, and I think the biggest thing is just making sure that we give it to them in items.
Hello, Nicole Grace, Long Island Road, Fox Trail, Black Forest. With Keep Up the Beautiful, I just want to let you know, we are working on some graphics. And you talked about the education and we certainly, that is really important. The graphics that we're sending out, what we found is the telephone number that's on the outside of the recycle bins that was actually disconnected in December. Thank you. The new recycle bins will still have that wrong number on them, but we're going to change the city's graphics to, is the county one? But we're gonna change the graphics to reflect the correct. And then the, we changed the graphics so instead of showing the large blue bin, which we do not use, it's like a common bin, but we use the short, more turquoise-looking ones. And so we tried to modify that within the act that we're putting out with the gas.
We're gonna put that side of the truck now.
Oh, okay. Cool. But that's gonna, it's going to give them instructions at one glance. So you look at it, because when I did the, the Bartram, the Bartram Festival out there, kids had not seen a recycle bin. They're, so the second day I brought one out so they could see it. And they're like, oh, what do you do? You put your garbage in there? No, you put in, and so catching them at those moments and trying to get it to them immediately as far as instantaneous education is what we're trying to work with there. And also, I think we're going to, we looked at going to the elementary schools. We're not sure which grade level yet. I have the handouts to give with the, the kids recycling. So I just want to let you know, we did have some education in the pipeline and now we've got to revise it because some of that information has changed. And I do believe we've had such an impact on recycling that we are backordered for the bins as well. Does that help?
I mean, well, I mean, appreciate, appreciate. I was just, I mean, I was just saying, well, what was communicated during the time period of the extension, it was supposed to have been weekly updates and just, I haven't seen a update. So that's what my concern was. So that's why I want to really hear from them, because we, we only had it for thirty days that we extended. So we got a vote on it at some point. And we're, we're still at one time a week on a temporary basis. And we'll, I will give specifics, even though specifics won't have been given to us. I'm gonna do some specific things as it relates to. I don't have the answers. I don't have all the answers, but I will give what I think will possibly work.
When was the last day of the trial? So it was supposed to run to the end of the year. We held the meeting prior to the end of the conditional ninety days, and it was a thirty-day extension. I think there's some confusion on my part if that's thirty days from the end of the calendar year or thirty days from the day we.
Thirty days from the end of the trial, from the ninety-day trial period at the end of January.
Yeah.
We extended it, it was a motion to extend the ninety-day trial period for another third day, so you're like a hundred twenty-eight total. All right. Um, any, is there anything that we need from the commission that Commissioners want to give insider direction to now as opposed to that we can make sure we do it now?
Well, I just want to, if we got forty-something hundred residents in businesses or whatever. Even, there's ways that we can distribute things to our residents in terms of mass or whatever. I'd like to get something back from the residents, like if, if we got like little small cards or anything like that, or maybe do a survey. But we gotta get something out to them. Do a survey or some, some cards and we can distribute those. I, I'll help distribute them. I just want to, I just want to, I just want to hear, I just want, in the newspaper, but we want to get, we want to, because we got the large areas that we can go in and hit. We can go in and hit those areas. I, I just want to hear from the people, if, if the trash is being picked up properly.
Could we, could we get the newspaper to, to look at putting a, a, a sign-up little thing in there that could cut out the paper and send that for a drop-off?
Just a little comment, I want to, I want to know. I'll pay a small fee for it.
We can, we can pay a small fee.
At least, at least we got to get a vote of, a feeling of how people really feel about doing.
I gotta hear. I, I need to know.
And one other thing that we, that left out is Jonathan will be picking up about a hundred garbage cans because some of the ones that we looked at were up at the top end, so those ones will be making sure in the next second or a second.
Well, the other thing too is, I read the stations, I'm Marshall Amy.
Some of them listen to radio.
There is some people who listen to the radio.
I think, I think, I think that.
They still work?
In order to get the word out, there has to be a combination of things. There is not just one sole method that will get the job done. We know sending it out, even on the, your ga, your, what, the gas bill, it didn't work. It was only a matter of citizens out of all. So we have to use a combination or a variety of different methods in order to make it happen. Again, I would prefer, only thing that I want to know is the educational components. If it's out there and we point people to one central location as to how to get the information, I'm fine with that. If we host a meeting, give individuals ample enough time, because a lot of times we do stuff at the last minute. If we hold ample enough time to know that there is meetings or several meetings, the meetings that Mr. Shanahan is having, then allow those people to come there. If they don't, we assume that they're satisfied. If they're not, they'll show up, they'll come. But we have to offer a variety of options, of different ways in order to accommodate all the citizens of Palatka. Everyone doesn't read the newspaper. Everyone doesn't look, have Facebook. Everyone does not have, um, just everything. We have to, we have to go out and do, you know, a lot of different things to make it happen, get the word out as maximized as possible.
Reach out to the churches. We got, we got different ways we can do it.
They have announcements every Sunday.
Those town halls would be a, a great way and we'll reach out to the churches as well and so, um, the various organizations. We can deal with the various organizations, the roaderies and all these different people. Kind of see if we can get some help, because I want to hear from them. Got it.
You may, you may need to enlist the help of some part-time workers to get that information out, because you're working with, working with a skeleton staff.
Yeah, I, I mean, I can, I'll help and if we don't.
So that we, so that we know, because we talked about trash a little longer and I won't do it at this point. So, um, if you guys don't have anything else. Yes, ma'am. You can go ahead. Everybody else talk about trash, go ahead. Just fill out a sticker card for me to back me.
That's okay. Glenn DeRaven, Twenty Twenty Country Club Terrace here in Palatka. Just a couple of comments on the trash situation. It hasn't been a problem for me, but I'm single. When my children came and I had eleven people in my house, I had a recycle bin full and I sat out a trash can that was also full of recyclables because I only had one can. They took my recyclable bin and they left the recyclables in the trash can, as you could see, obviously was recycled. But when I moved here two and a half years ago, I didn't get any information about when was trash day, when was recycle day. So my question is, do you give out a packet saying, welcome to Palatka, with information like this? New residents would have the information and I see transit in my community where they sold three houses and we now have new members. And the neighbors would go, we'd knock on the door and say, you know, such and such day is trash day, if you want to take up your recyclables. But I can't even tell them what is recyclable. My daughter comes from Tallahassee and she was putting things in the bin for Christmas and I say, you can't recycle that. But then she'd say, can you recycle this? I'd say, well, I'm not really sure. So each is a pamphlet, you know, something that we can get on our door or whatever would help because we have a lot of people that are coming and I love Palatka. But the biggest thing, we are complaining about trash all over places. What I'm seeing is people dumping their trash on the side of the road in your cars and lots. And I've commented on Facebook a few times.
Three seconds.
Okay. Do we have anybody we can report to?
If you see litter, call Public Works 329-0107.
That's all I need. Thank you.
And if, if you see someone dumping it, take the license plate and give him that.
Yes, please.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anything else on trash? Say nothing, we're moving. It's you, you guys, special guest with you.
So we don't want to follow the trash. Thank you for fixing that.
Now, just told a little something about you.
He just messed it up.
Yeah, I saw you did.
Go your way.
Three seconds. All right, Mr. You. Our show, we do that tomorrow.
Mayor, Mayor Commissioners, Mr. City Manager and Mr. Holman, so I might add. One last plug for the fly-in that's on January twenty-fifth. Please come out and enjoy the day. A little history on this. We started this ten years ago with about seven hundred people and it's up to about seven thousand people. And it's really become what I like to call too big to succeed, which leads me to, uh, say, I, I've got to say that this thing has become too big for me to handle. I mean, as much of the labor of love as it is, every year it gets bigger and bigger and bigger. And this year, I had some personnel changeover, lost somebody at last minute. It's really been a very, very difficult thing and to put on, put together this year. We're gonna make it. It's just been some pain. There was an article in the paper this morning that generated some discussion that talked about these difficulties. We're gonna work through it and let's reclaim my, my guest here, ask him to come and talk to the commission a little bit about that article to kind of put it in a little, a little better perspective here. But we've given you a list of, of the support that the city gave to us last year and it, and it's significant. So we are not saying the city is not supportive of this. It's, it's more kind of a burden that I have from October, January. So thank you for talking out.
Thank you. I just want to say, we do appreciate the city's support on the fly-in. We believe that in the coming years and, and we think in February, we're gonna have to do a review of what we got, going from seven hundred people to seven thousand. This animal's gotten a little too big. So we're gonna work on that, but I just wanted to say, I appreciate everything the city does to help support it. Thank you.
Absolutely.
You smile when you say that.
Yeah.
So when you come out, if you would, please take notes. We'd like to have a meeting in February if you get that information to us on ways to improve it. Other organizations, we need other organizations to step up here and may, may make it a joint venture with the county or something like that. But we're looking for ideas. Like I said, I think it has become not too big to fail, but too big to succeed. We sure appreciate your help and support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Shanahan, can you read into the record what we spent in two thousand nineteen on this event by the city? An event that's budgeted for ninety-eight hundred bucks per year in the airport, in the airport's budget as well to cover any deficits that may not come from any contributions or sponsorships?
Airport staff time was six thousand dollars. Event application fee was three hundred dollars that was waived by the city. Special local liability insurance policy was one thousand one hundred thirty-five dollars paid by the city. Seventeen garbage cans, truck and full, and full-reach personnel was eight hundred and forty dollars waived by the city. Police support was nine hundred fifty-two dollars waived by the city. First responder support was one thousand four hundred dollars waived by the city. Golf cart rental, twelve each, one thousand eight hundred dollars donated by the golf course. Total city contribution was twelve thousand four hundred twenty-seven dollars and.
I just want to make sure that even if everybody, everybody's helping out and donating to this event, including the city, because it's a city event and it's in the budget. So I just want to make sure the record was accurate as related to that event. And as the event grows, our contribution grows. Any, um, anything else? Moving forward, better.
I have two quick things. Good evening, everyone. So two quick things. I just wanted to let everybody know that, and I've talked about it before that. I'm gonna have some transition in the next three months. We are losing our dear Ms. Holly Harris to retirement. We're grateful for her service. However, as you all know, whenever I first started, I was baptized by fire. And so now I have been able to go back to one of my first initiatives that I wanted to do whenever I stepped, stepped foot in, in this office and wanted to do cross-training and that included myself so that I could learn what they were doing. This is the time that we have started doing that. I'm learning that those ladies work extremely hard and they have given me projects that have ticked my butt so far. So I'm learning their jobs, they're learning some of mine, so I think that it's a good collaboration, but I will be looking for somebody. It took a long time to get my last clerk in, so we will be advertising soon. If you have any suggestions or ideas of where to go for that. And then the second thing is, we are beginning a early review of our fire assessment fees. We're looking parcel by parcel with the help of the chief, the, the city manager being included in this because there has not been a review and in-depth of each parcel since it's been implemented. Therefore, we're gonna really dig into that and bring some suggestions and things. So that's gonna be a huge project.
How long do you think it'll take?
Um, I don't know. We're working on it now, trying to divvy out some duties to make sure that we're covering all of it. So in the past two budget cycles that I've been through, we get to, you know, the final minutes and we see some of these things and we're struggling to get every, all the pieces put together. So we wanted to start really early with this to where we bring you in a couple of workshops what we propose so that it's not one time hearing it and one time that you have time to digest what we're proposing and that's where I'm at. So we're gonna be massaging this information for a while and bring you some updates.
Is there any other help maybe that you know who could possibly help maybe with that?
Um, we've, I've been in touch with the property appraisers office, the tax collector's office. I actually have a meeting that I'm attending with the tax collector's office next week to discuss our tax distribution and how our processes work and what we can do to be collaborative with that. So I've enlisted the fire chief to help look through the parcels since they actually visit every, you know, business and that sort of thing for their inspection. So I think that we're good right now, but I appreciate the offer.
If you can just help leverage that and if, if the commission can help in any way, we'll be happy to do so.
Absolutely. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Logan has also put together a committee that will be looking at all the fees that we're charging and why we're charging them and what we're not charging.
Okay.
They'll be putting that together. We'll be using department heads to address all of them.
We have our first meeting in a couple of weeks and, so we're just looking through some of the fees that have, haven't been looked at in a while, seeing if we can implement some new fees, maybe change some things around, delete the ones that are irrelevant anymore. So, yeah, we have, we have some good projects going on.
Thank you for that thorough work.
Absolutely. Thank you.
All right. Well, I happen to be on Facebook this, you know, I kind of hit it every now and then, but I see different comments out there every now and then. I saw for one person said that they had an outlandish water bill and one of our employees responded to it or whatever, but in a positive way. So, uh, and the individual didn't know who to turn to. They didn't reach out to the city. They didn't know why that bill was so high, so somebody just suggested that, reach out to the city, they can send somebody out to check for water leaks or whatever. So, but we had an employee who went above and beyond, in my opinion. And I think we need to have some ways that we, I kind of, I guess, give them some recognition or reward for doing that. Not that everybody should be going out doing things like that, but. Not that everybody should be going out doing things like that, but she could have just easily just let the situation just drop off by the wayside, but she responded. I saw it, I almost made a statement about it, but after she made her statement, I thought that was enough. So, uh, it was Ms. Glenda Hinton, um, in our public works area, uh, she knew the lady or whatever, and then she said that she would take care of it. And I did speak with, uh, our public work director, Jonathan Griffin, and he, he did mention that, but she ended up taking care of that situation. So I'd like to give her some recognition around those things like that. The other thing that I had was the code enforcement, there was another thing out in the, in the social media space as it relates to our city and what's happening along those lines. And I think I sent a list in, and one, this particular thing is still, is on that list, and, uh, need to be worked, but, um, it's right there at the corner of Eleventh Street and, um, Eleventh and Bronson, right there. So it's on that list, and we need to see what we can do to make sure that these things are really not, um, casting a dark shadow over our community. Uh, so, and I think you, you have it on the list, just provide a little bit of feedback where we're on the status, because it's, I think it's getting worse, so...
They met with all of us several times. It's been addressed multiple times.
Right, right, but I just want to make sure that those things are in the pipeline and still working, but appreciate that, thanks.
Yes, sir. Commissioner McCaffrey.
You're welcome.
Mike, ma'am.
I just want to say thank you. I see I got a birthday card here. Everybody know I'm a little younger. I appreciate it. And I want to thank my commission and our staff, and all the people who work for us, for all the great work they do. We don't say thank you enough sometimes. We getting better, but, um, want to know, let you know that we love, I love all of you, and I know you love me, and I hope that you had a good holiday, that's all.
And you have to have a good birthday.
Oh, I'm going to ask a question. The city has a birthday this month, too, we a hundred and what?
Hundred and sixty-seven, I think?
Eighteen fifty-three.
Eighteen fifty-three, so that's...
And it's not many things that last that long, so we blessed that our city is still here and thriving.
There's a, there's another birthday here today, too, Mr. Brown. Was there another person there?
Not me. Pretty late in the area.
All right.
I just heard something, your birthday quarters have changed, your two quarters have changed.
I have, I have something for you.
Happy birthday!
Well, thank you.
My grandmother told me, don't worry about getting old, just get, get Foxy.
Foxy, Commissioner McCaffrey.
One last thing, I know we talked about the MLK festival, but I'll be remiss if I don't mention the MLK breakfast, um, breakfast that takes place on January the eighteenth at the Ravine State Garden at nine a.m. The speaker for that event is Dr. Patrick Coggins. Uh, he's a Stetson University professor. Also at that event, we will be highlighting, honoring some local aspiring youth and aspiring adults. The tickets for that event is twenty dollars per ticket for one hundred and fifty dollars for a table of eight. So if you are interested out there in TV land, um, let us know, and we will be honored to have you, um, join us again, that's, uh, January the eighteenth at nine a.m.
Commissioner McCaffrey, I would think the time for, I'll be having a parade that morning also, because I have a party.
On the twenty, on the twenty, Monday, there is a parade that'll be commencing at ten a.m. It's going from the Seventh Street to the Riverfront, where there at eleven, the actual performance is going to take place. Um, well, a array of things throughout the day, vendors and all of that kind of stuff. And there are several, um, community organizations, community music. Category five is going to be there, we have God's Examples, we have House of God Church Choir is going to be there, we have LaFara Davis, who's actually going to be doing an encore performance of The Wiz. Um, that's going to be the last thing taking place that day, she goes on at around three. Um, so there's a variety of things that'll be going on for that day. So come out, there's a variety of music, um, so that everyone will have the opportunity to enjoy that day. And I got one more thing about trash. Same as the bridge, not closing, huh?
I'm done. Thank you for not having that comment. Um, I'll be speaking on the twentieth, at the MLK celebrations, and start on next Saturday. Um, for those, also for those of you who didn't get an opportunity to come earlier this week, the Palatka Housing Authority is, will be presenting around the community. We've also invited them in for our meeting on the twenty-third to come in and share with you their new proposal, that they move forward with a master plan, um, to do some form of residential rehab, building, uh, new units, tearing down old units. It's, it's a, they've got a proposal that, an RFP that has just gone out, they had two proposals in place, the commission attended, um, the meeting, and, uh, we heard presentations from the, uh, from the two responders, and that project could be up to forty-eight million dollars. Um, and so I think it's critical that the input of the citizens also be there to look at this project. I've had an opportunity to talk extensively with Dr. Woods, this project could be a great economic driver for the community. Uh, it has a lot of moving pieces, and it's just a matter of everyone, um, being on, on one accord. And so we're also proposing a joint commission meeting with the Housing Authority Commission and the City Commission. Uh, we've had, we've had our staff in collaboration, talking about certain things, so that we can make sure that everything is in compliance with the, the comp plan and with their five-year plan, which will be on the agenda soon. Uh, so all those things have, um, been discussed, and I think it's incumbent upon this commission to make sure that we have our, that we have our, our seat at the table as we continue to move forward with this project. Outside of that, we're just excited, we've had a lot of investors come in here, uh, looking at the city of Palatka in various ways. Uh, we wish we could share everything, but there are so many folks that are coming here and talking about Palatka. Um, the gym of the St. Johns will again shine in the same way that it did before, and maybe even better, but I think overall that what it's going to take is, is the people sitting in this room, the people who are watching this on TV, to understand why you should be proud to be from Palatka. Um, you know, outside of having long conversations about trash, it's clean, and there are a lot of things that need to be put into place. Um, the problems that we have are, are minimal when you compare it to what other communities go through. Most commissions don't come in and laugh, most citizens don't sit here and they're happy when they walk out. Uh, we've had growing pains, and we're trying new things, and so the good part about trying new things is, sometimes you get it wrong, sometimes you get it right, but you still gather information, and you increase opportunity. And so, uh, I'm glad to see this commission engaged in the process of talking about things as simple as trash collection and what the fee should be for the citizen, and making sure that citizens are protected, and that we stand here as the stewards of our citizens and their voices. And so, uh, I'm glad to hear that, maybe not as long, but I'm glad to hear that. Um, and so, since I'm not talking about trash anymore, I'm going to entertain a motion to adjourn.